A couple of delegations here. First of all, Bob Metz, MacLeans, who's going to update us on stormwater management. Well, welcome. So I've been asked by staff to come today just to give a brief update as to where we are in the process and some of the things that have led to the delays that we're experiencing and where we go from here. So you recall the Phase One draft report was submitted November, submitted to the Town November 2nd of 2012, presented to council December the 12th, 2012, and the final report, final Phase One report was submitted January 14th. Jim Dumont, the Town's expert, I believe, addressed council following that on the 23rd of January. Since that time, we've run into some problems with the software that we've been utilizing. Unfortunately, it's a third-party software. It's Qualheimo is the name of the software. It's the engine that runs the water balance model. So in December, late December of 2012, we discovered that there were some discrepancies between the new version of the software and the output files and the previous version of software. We had switched software to a newer version because as of following March 28th, Council of Doc, March 28th, 2012, cancelled that Doc with terms of reference. In June of 2012, there was an amendment to those terms of reference to include climate change as a parameter in the study. The climate change module that runs on Qualheimo couldn't run on previous version of software, so we had to upgrade. And this led to the problems we've run into. We've, third-party software, we're not party to the progress that they're making, other than updates that come through periodically through Jim Dumont, the Town's consultant, who has a relationship with the software developers. So we've been waiting now roughly seven months for a solution to the software issue. And we've discussed possible workarounds with Jim Dumont previously, and Jim had suggested that, if I've got any, a brief quote here from one of his piece of correspondence, "If all else fails, we can write a simple routine to modify the climate data before it goes into the model. Rather than have the model do the climate data revisions internally. This is not an elegant solution, but pushed, it could be done to get things moving forward." So we've been waiting now, as I say, for many months for the software should be resolved. It hasn't been. There's no indication of when it will be. So we've begun work along these lines in amending the climate data to put into the model so that we can work around this issue that we're having. We've had some success to date. We're at a point now where we're fine-tuning the dataset to make sure that the new output is where it should be. And it looks like we have concurrence between Jim Dumont, the Town's consultant, and our group. So we're now at a point where we can start hopefully moving forward again and progressing. So that takes us to where we are today. And I was asked by staff to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Anything from staff at this moment? Ken?
Yeah, just wondering, must be awfully frustrating for the proponents of this. I'm certain they're up to their, tearing their hair out with this, but so what will this mean in terms of moving their project along? You know, you had an eight-month delay. Are we eight months behind now or?
We are. We've put down tools until this is resolved. Nobody anticipated this was going to take this long to resolve. The feedback that we're receiving from the software's developer every couple of weeks was, "Two more weeks, we're almost there. Two more weeks, we're almost there." And the latest correspondence was, "We don't know whether we're going to have it resolved." So we've decided we can't continue to wait. So we are, you know, to the point that we put down tools six, seven months ago, we're that far behind.
Because we were talking in terms of January 1st, sort of being up to speed or more close to it. Are you thinking now midsummer next year? Is that?
We're hoping if we can get back on track to have this finished by the end of the year. There's roughly six months' work remaining when we spoke last. That same six months' work still remains. So if we can get back on track now, that may end of the year approximately.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, my brother. Do any of the engineers, including the Town's engineers, think that this climate change is going to be a game changer to whatever plan that you guys are putting together for the stormwater management?
It will change it. It will change the results. We've, the data that we're using is the median data from the, I wrote it down because I never remember it, the, wait one second. Pacific Climate Impacts Consortium, this is a group that have developed a number of different climate change scenarios. So taking the median, median dataset, because it is a big spread frankly, very conservative to very dramatic. We've applied monthly factors to the rainfall data and to the climate data, the temperature data, and it is fairly significant 50 years out. So it will make a difference. You know, the amount of rainfall is roughly the same, but the distribution is quite different. We're going to see less rainfall in summertime, much more in the mitter time. So anything that we design has to account for this. So there are some, potentially some, I want to say significant, but some real changes that could occur because of it.
In what you guys are designing?
In what we're designing.
So whatever you've designed now could change dramatically once you run it against this model if we ever.
Well, we had stopped at the point of having to come to rely on this data because it wasn't available. So we haven't lost ground. We're not having to go backwards to redo things. We've stopped at the point where we figured we were going to run into trouble. Does that answer your question?
No.
No?
You guys have designed a stormwater management plan right now, correct? Or you haven't completed?
We haven't completed. We've taken it to the point of completion of Phase One, which is defining the pre-developing conditions, the hydrological, hydrogeological conditions. So Phase Two of that study is to determine which BMPs, which tools we're going to use to manage a stormwater in what arrangement, where they're going to be, how big they're going to be, and agree on who's going to own and maintain those facilities over time. Phase Three is the detailed design.
So there is really no way to move forward there?
Well, there is with this new workaround. As Jim points out, it's not very elegant, but it will work. So we can utilize the data, manually adjust it, and plug it back into the model, and it will approximate the climate change scenario that the software would have dealt with on its own.
Marvin, you're next.
Yes, and so you mentioned that going away from the software won't be as elegant. But will it be as accurate? We're already looking at Lancaster Fund as not adequate to the stormwater and not be a cost to the town, I understand, in fixing it. So it's really important to get it right. So you, the lack of elegance results in the same accuracy as it is?
Yes, and we wouldn't move on until there was agreement that between the Town and the consulting group that it was accurate and it did reflect.
All right. Any further questions, comments? Staff, any comments? Marvin, your comment at this point in time, any questions?
Well, the, this is a problem with Qualheimo, so we're not the only ones in this situation. The information from the Town's consultant wasn't, the workaround wasn't available. It's one thing dealing with, you know, you could do a workaround patch, but if you're getting information that it's going to, the model's going to be fixed in two weeks, you have to do one thing, wait for the model to fix in two weeks. And I think with that, really start to write things up. But other communities are using a simple patch. So this is something that has been, is used extensively in Surrey. There's some communities that mandate that it's a lot that has to be run on. So, and we've been advised, yes, in terms of the accuracy, that we should be getting out of the data, it should be within a simpler accuracy on our level.
All right. Well, certainly, climate change is all in the news, both south of the water and east of the East Bronx. So we thank you for your update and look forward to hearing from you further as you proceed. Heather's, I'm going to defer to, Heather had some technical difficulty with her presentation, so she'll come back to us in the near future if she has some joy. Yeah, couldn't get the video to operate. And nothing to do with climate change.
Oh, yes, it all, everything does.
So we'll hear from her in July, hopefully. So that moves us on to staff report on coach houses and starting on page nine. And certainly Marvin, Siri's recommendations will allow you to introduce this perhaps. If you can, I'm sure as well, I know we worked hard on this, so. What's yours?
Certainly the, so what this report is, it's in response to implementation of the official community plan, which is also on council's strategic plan as a priority. On that, in terms of the affordable housing, we need more and more actions off of affordable housing. We had the legalization of secondary suites, which was recently completed in terms of probably being allowed in all zones. What, the next project was the issue of coach houses, which is a separate dwelling and typically in the backyard of a single-family property. The, we had inherited with some of the areas around Point Homes, High Bay, the regional district zone, did allow for some coach houses. However, the idea here was, what about infill on a city size lot? What we really tried to do, we did, there's a lot of work in terms of the process that we approached, we approached this with in terms of learning from some of the difficulties or the possible glitches that we had in our secondary suite legalization program, and also in terms of looking at Vancouver, and Vancouver's got a well-established coach house allowance. Victoria recently came out with a mission to allow coach houses, and they've had some little more glitches in terms of the uptake on that. Also been talking with the private sector in terms of people who are interested in supplying this kind of housing, what they need, what their needs are. Really what it came boiled down to is the idea that if we're going to do this, not only, we won't be dealing with developers, we'll be dealing with properties. So they're not going to be used to a large regulatory process. It's going to be a lot, it's going to be, you know, they're going to want something that's a club and play. Yes, we are anticipating that neighbors, of course, will be very concerned with something being on, on neighboring property and implications for theirs. The, so we anticipate some concerns about things like design. The allowances that are before you are modeled on the existing accessory building plans. So that we're able to say, if somebody's going to be doing a coach house in the backyard, yes, it may be a coach house, but that's quite similar, the design is quite similar to height in terms of what somebody could already build as a shed, as a garage in the backyard. So the impact, we're trying to keep that impact the same. The, and in that regards, so we've come up with some zoning, general zoning providers that are in the report, that will get into things, keeping the size and keeping the height down. We propose to develop and also a development permit area that would really, the primary aspect of the development permit area of this would be, what are the principles in terms of privacy on neighboring lots that, A, we have a very high comfort that it will be acceptable, it will work, the neighbors will notice that, that it will work for tenants. And to put those principles in something very short and simple becomes the example. So somebody who wants a club and play is able to go up and say, "Great, I want to build it. Do I build it in accordance with these parameters?" Kind of really believing in things like windows, where your windows are going to be orientated so you're not putting your windows directly into your neighbor's backyard, you have some outdoor open space. But if you do that, you can, you don't have to go through a long process, this will flow straight building, and you know that that design is acceptable. So you're looking at rezoning and building that. And if you want to do something custom, you've got to do a lot, you've got incredible trees, so it doesn't matter if you put your windows all facing the neighboring property, you still have the development option, so you can still do a custom design on that. The, in terms of the processing, what we really identify as the key, and so it's come up quite heavily in the Victoria example, is it's hard to get those early adopters out there. I mean, the first people, the first one, two, three people, they're the ones that they don't know how council's going to react, they don't know how the community's going to react to this, so it's kind of a high level of risk. So we're trying to address, well, okay, what can we do to smooth process through them? And that's where we see the regulations coming forward in terms of the amendments on our processing procedures to draw up the fee. When we did the, when we did the secondary suites, council dropped a fee of $500 and applied expedited processing. Then $500 leased for the first couple might be a bit high, so we're recommending $200 application fee, same expedited processing. The, in terms of also trying to assist, looking at, one of the problems that we always have is the big signs that have to blow up. Those things cost like $200, this house is working, this bill up. The impact on these is going to be quite localized. It's going to be the adjoining properties. So what we're proposing there is to say, well, okay, don't have, don't require a sign on the properties in terms of the notice of rezoning, limited to just the adjacent properties. There's still the public hearing notice in the paper in terms of the wider neighborhood. So there still is that avenue. The, so those are the impacts on the processing aspect of it. Vancouver is actually finding out quite a bit that going into this area, which is the limiting coach houses to one-story. They started off with a two-story program, the idea meaning that you have a garage, two-story garage, a backyard, still have one parking space, and then you have some living space on the ground floor and above. And what they found in doing that was, again, it's the privacy of the adjoining properties is effectively starting to go up. Also, people just build, they take the car out and then start living in there, and if you don't have more allows for a car, where that car is supposed to go on-site, you start having parking problems. So they're really, as they're fine-tuning the program, they're really going more and more in terms of encouraging the one-story. And their size limits are low, keeping to it, will be out for those.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Tom?
Marvin, I noticed in there that we're not, we're not changing the site coverage, right? And that's going to, that's going to be problematic for some people who want to build a coach house if they don't have, you know, a lot that's big enough, right? And you're shaking your head.
Oh, it's not going to be problematic.
It won't be?
No.
In general, it's not, because I mean, right now, we're at 35% site coverage, and people are, people are building out and still having their garages, their detached garages on it. So if somebody builds their house absolutely to the maximum, yes, it will kick in. But then we're going to have, we're going to have issues in terms of site coverage, we'll have issues with the things like stormwater, and quite a different effect on the neighborhood. So actually, in the OCP policies for this, that is one of the provisions, that there be no increase in maximum allowable parcel coverage. But for the majority of lots that we're envisioning, from 500 square meters up, we actually don't see it as a common living factor.
So, you know, I had some suspects. So we're bringing down the price of the permit fee, you know, because we realize that that's a cost driver, but there's other cost drivers that we're leaving in there, which are far more detrimental, I think, than, than the permit fee. For instance, you know, if you, you know, we have in there that you need a development permit. So as soon as you need a development permit, staff is going to require a landscape plan, which means you have to hire a landscape architect, which means you have to hire a professional landscaper, instead of people just doing their own landscaping, which is done in every residential neighborhood in this valley. But yet, if somebody wants to build a coach house, gets a development permit, now we're triggering a 900 to $1,000, $1,200 landscape plan by an architect. And these are the cost drivers that really kill these projects, not the permit fee. There's another thing, you know, you talk about tree retention. Well, your staff, you know, as soon as they see there's going to be a tree in the way, then you're going to require the permanent applicant to hire an arborist who's going to come out, and the arborist is going to cost $1,000. And, you know, if the tree's in the way of the house or the coach house, it's going to go anyway. You know, these are the cost drivers when you hit these things, not the, not the permit application. So we've got to eliminate the other cost drivers. Like, there's, I can see absolutely no rationale whatsoever from having a landscape architect have to do somebody's landscape design because they want to build a coach house in their backyard. So we should eliminate that out of, out of the development permit fee, because, you know, we issue development permits for 100-lot subdivision, and we don't require a landscape plan for all 100 lots. Yet if we do a two-lot subdivision, we need a landscape plan. Cost drivers. These, and well, that's what happens, Pat, you look puzzled, but as soon as you need a development permit, you need a landscape plan, you need an arborist, you need, you need a plethora of things that drive the cost completely out of sight.
All right. I think.
Yeah, we agree that that's one of the critical factors when you look at this, especially, it's one thing when you're dealing with very custom issues, custom infill, subdivisions, and dealing with a developer, but it's very different when you're dealing with a homeowner. So we've designed the exemptions. We would assume that 90, 95% of all, of all coach houses fall under the exemptions.
So DP would be required?
DP would not be required. So what we're proposing to build in is standardized screening for the backyard, hedging fencing or a combination thereof along the rear, in the rear yard that's out of straight spec.
Perfect. That's, that's more, yeah, that's more in keeping with, you know, let's eliminate those cost drivers, but still have some protection in it. So I'm perfectly in accordance with.
The open space requirement in the exemptions would simply be that both units have a combination of ground area, get out a patio of 15 square meters, and be readily accessible to the unit, i.e. you can't put a coach house in one corner of your backyard and then stick its open space way in the other corner, right? It has to be relatively close by. Regarding trees, the exemptions would simply say, the, if you require to remove a tree or 20 centimeters in diameter to obtain your maximum coach house size, so in other words, once you have your maximum coach house, you're out of the zoning, if the only way to put that in your backyard is that you have to take out a tree of that size, you're able to do so, and you simply replant one tree on your property of, we have a spec then for a deciduous or coniferous tree. No further regulations like that.
Okay. Thank you. Marvin?
Yes, and thank you. Thanks for the explanation and a very good report. And the stormwater, as we're covering greater site coverage, I noticed that Vancouver required permeable parking spaces. Is that something that you looked at? Because I think cost for cost, it's probably as cheap, if not cheaper, it's just a good way of getting rechargeable and runoff.
Yeah, in our case, with the OCP, we're limited, we're not increasing parcel coverage. So the, you're currently allowed, for example, in the R1.1, a maximum parcel coverage of 35%, and that would remain. So there would not be an increase.
But do you, I mean, I understand that you are not changing the amount that's allowed, that by the very fact of people building, people have a certain, they have their house, they have the sheds they need, so this is something additional that they're creating. So they're not going against the bio, but they are creating more ground coverage. Is it something you looked at?
Well, we looked at it in terms of sort of balancing things that the, what we're recommending is that in terms of the regulations, like our parking regulations currently allow you to do improvised materials, provided it's durable and dust free, you're able to do it. In things like the pedestrian access to it, again, be built in into the exemptions that it can be paved or not paved, as long as, in this case, somebody who's handicapped can get into it, still usable, it's not a burden, things like that. So we've made sure that the regulations allow, would allow for it, but they do not require it as currently worded. Anyone in council wishes to give us direction to do that, where AP's the, do you have this one?
Great, thank you. And I just wanted to add too, I think it's a great idea in the, in the sizes, when you're looking at the larger parcels, you can allow for a larger footprint, that you're exploring if people are giving something, say, to the land trust, or I assume that means a land donation or a covenant on the property, is that?
Anything of that magnitude, the, probably that we get up, when we get above 70 square meters, you're really starting to get into two-to-one small, it's not a secondary, it's a substantial size. So the existing are 3.3, our sort of rural zone, so Point Homes, the maximum that is in that zone is 70 square meters, coach houses. And we also know from people, from inquiries in that area, that, again, the same as seen in the OCP, if the maximum can go up to 90, it's like, well, okay, we want to go for 90. So we knew that we have to at least provide guidance in terms of policy and regulations as to when, when you can go up to the 90. Otherwise, generally, especially in the larger lots, we just apply straight for the number.
And in the rural, or the past rural areas, some of them are sewed and some of them aren't, would you require that they have sewer access or septic systems would be allowed for the secondary?
Our tab looks at the existing regime whereby on those parcels, the, all parcels are allowed in that area, like let's say, the Lazaro area, that there are allowed coach houses, but you have to have a certain size so that the Hutton, well, the smaller properties on Hutton Road and Septic can't have a coach house. The engineering report that we did get indicated that in terms of septic, that the general development pattern that's out there is able to be supported on that, so we felt quite comfortable in terms of allowing the larger parcels allowing the coach houses. So we'd still propose to keep that, that rate in rural areas.
Okay, so I mean, you say the larger properties, what size were you looking at?
Generally, the larger, in terms of, even in the rural areas.
That there's no.
Really, what we focus in rural areas is we know that Hutton, though, you're starting to get real urban-sized properties close to the waterfront, tends to be larger homes, higher usage, that's more of a concern in terms of, we're going to get a concern about the septics, that's where we see the first concerns coming.
Matty?
Thank you. Great, great report. Really excited to see this coming forward. But in my mind, I had a coach house as that above the garage unit. I watched my happy days of Ponte, I guess. So I was really disappointed to see that that was not going to be allowable. And I hear what you say about height and maybe privacy to the neighbors, but I would have thought if we could control the windows, you don't build underneath, it's a garage underneath. I just think it's the ideal coach house, and it's also, you're not putting more footprint onto the property, it's over the existing footprint. So I would like to see somehow that that could be applied. And my two other questions are, just on that piece about not having to put up the sign, but making sure we notice, notify the surrounding neighborhood, I'd really like to ensure that we give lots of opportunity for them to apply. I think we've heard over and over again that people get these notices and then they don't feel like they had enough time to get in here to reply. And then my last would be, seeing that the fire chief's here, I would like to hear his comments on a coach house in the back of a property, how do you feel that access is provided?
Not a big problem. Lots of just built the code, small blocks.
You don't see a driveway going right to it?
No, we wouldn't have a full street. I think we do some of the bigger, other properties.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
On, yeah, the parish houses, essentially what we've done is really tried to just follow the rationale of being able to say that there's no impact coming from the western. If we do allow coach houses, so our current accessory buildings are all limited to one story, maximum four point five meter, maximum height. So that's where that's done. And, you know, Vancouver's experience is, you lose, you lose the garage, they just become a two-story dwelling. And they're now, they're fine tuning to going to where the one story. From our OCP, in terms of where they're really envisioning the crunch, as our young elderly gets the old elderly, and one of the benefits of the one story is that that's a lot more interesting accessibility. We'll look at that, if we can tie it, that all of these coach houses will be gaffel houses And as for notice, we do have, we do need the statute, and we do try to balance that notice with, you know, people's expectations in terms of the timeline, you know, we're hoping to expedite these. So this is our direction from council, which is, should we go with what the statutory forms?
And what is, what does that length of notice?
Length of notice for a rezoning is maximum ten days prior to the public hearing. Notice has to be mailed in on ten days prior to the public hearing, the notice has to go into the newspaper, two consecutive issues of paper, the last notice not less than three days prior to the public hearing, and not more than ten days prior to the public hearing.
Yeah, so at one point, because this always seems to come up in film with the notice, I think you and I had talked about ten days in the person's hand, not ten days after mailing it, but they actually have it for ten days. So, now, I know you can't perfect that, you know, it's hard to do it to know for sure, but, you know, if the expectation was it went in the mail two weeks, you'd be pretty assured that they had it for a good ten days in their hand before that occurred. It just seems to be an ongoing theme, and if it stops, some of that, then.
What's mailed?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm showing my age right now. Yeah, yeah, that's right, your own happy days.
Only gets mailed prior to being sent to.
Yeah, well, but there are ways, you know, if you get, like, you could actually have someone handle it with them in some of those cases, if you had to, just to ensure that you got them there ten days in the past.
We have to follow our procedures, you know, in some cases, there are issues around months, weekends, and whatnot, but we have to follow the statutory rules.
Yeah, which are, which are the minimums. Counselors to advise us, they wish to give a clear fourteen days in general, then that's something that we can do.
Versus ten days. Okay, we'll see where we get to. Any other questions, Meryl, before we get to this?
I just, I just sort of comment about the tree retention piece. I would prefer that it not be included in that. I am all in favor of coach houses and so on, and I think we should educate and encourage people to be planting trees. However, it just feels a little prescriptive, especially when you're going to, you know, for every tree you have to take down, you have to plant it no matter what, and pretty soon, there would be less space in your home or yard to deal with. I would prefer that it's left up to the property owner to determine how their property is going to be utilized. Maybe they would like to kind of play around in there for grandkids or children, or water features and so on. And if we're having to plant a number of trees in there, then it could really impact how the rest of the remaining property is used.
All right, thanks for that comment. So we have a series of recommendations here, and also the other journal comments and questions we can proceed with, and we'll see where we get to. So we had a comment there on tree retention, we had a comment on notice. In terms of the recommendations, staff are looking for direction quickly for council's consideration, as the OCP will file out to create a new development perimeter for coach houses, and the objectives are outlined there on a series of the sections, and create guidelines for non-standard proposals. So that would be probably where we want to deal with tree retention, if I'm not mistaken. Staff, is there, where would that, that would be in that, you know, subject where council decides here?
Yes, I mean, that's, that would be if you wish to amend that to, say, and that the development, not deal with retention of, retention of trees, that would give us the direction.
So is there a mover for recommendation one with that amendment?
Well, I'd like to move that tree retention consideration in.
Yeah, well, we're dealing with recommendation one with that amendment, then, is that what you're saying?
So she wants to move recommendation one with that amendment, that's what I was saying.
Could we just move it as amendments?
Well, we'll move recommendation one, but it's the, that's going to require input from us, because they actually haven't created the bylaw yet. So we need guidance as to what's going to be in that bylaw. So that's why I suggested if that was the amendment that was coming forward, we could move it with that amendment, would either pass or fail, and then we would want, unless there's other amendments that people want. That's only one here, substantially, I see others, notice.
Just further to what Counselor Fletcher was talking about, so when we've talked about creating guidelines for non-standard proposals, why couldn't we include the upstairs of a garage? I mean, if, you know, if that's going to, as a non-standard proposal, if somebody comes up with a good plan, like, let's say you've got a great, big tree property that nobody can see into anyway, and you want to, you've got a garage there, and you want to build a coach house on top of it, and the way we've written these guidelines, that would preclude you from doing that. Whereas I believe, you know, as Counselor Fletcher was talking about, there will be instances where that would be, a suite above a garage would be totally appropriate, or it's not going to affect the neighbors where.
Right, okay, so does that make sense, Mr. Black?
The, there would be, no, there's nothing in the proposed, the conceptual alternative guidelines that would speak to whether it's one story or two, so.
But specifically said not above a garage?
The, no, that would be in the zone, so to do that simple direction.
That would be under?
Number three, coach house regulations with the option to allow for two-story units at, on a site-specific basis.
Yeah, okay, so we'll wait till number three then. Thank you. I'll second, Colonel Sider.
Okay, so for clarity, what we're talking about here is an OCP amendment by law to create these DPA area for coach houses, establishing objectives and so on, and without a requirement for tree retention, essentially, we're saying. Okay, so that's removed, a second discussion, Barbara?
Yes, well, I certainly support what Counselor Fletcher and Grant brought up about the, above the, the coach house with the garage and the house above, where appropriate, so.
We'll deal with that under number three.
That I cannot support going backwards on our tree retention policy. I think that A, it undermined what we do in all our other areas, this is a standard, and my understanding is it's standard that when a development happens, we require replacement of trees if they have to be removed. So, and I also think that one of the big things that come up when people have development happening next door in their neighborhood is concern over the trees. That's one of the major things that come up, and so I would hope, first of all, that we would be doing our utmost to site so that we're not impacting the trees. But I think that to have that policy, that when we take a tree down, we plant a tree, I think it's, I think it's very important. We just went through our urban forest planning, and how important, you know, having that tree canopy, how much ahead of the game we are now, and, you know, what a great thing, that other communities are aspiring to be like us. So I just see it as a backwards step, and so I just have a difficulty that I support the rest, but I can't support it with.
Any comments?
Oh, just for clarification on this amendment, I appreciate that we're not compromising people's property by saying they can't remove the trees. So we're not, we're not saying that, but we're just saying if you do remove a tree, you're going to have to replace it. Is that where it's presently at?
Uh, yeah, our present feeling was that if you can build your maximum-sized coach house without taking down a tree or set twenty centimeters in diameter, that you do that, under the exemptions. So it's under the exemption criteria, but likewise, under the exemption criteria, if you, if you have to take down a tree and build that maximum size, and you've got another place to build it, then it's just a straight one-to-one. If you, if at the same time you have a property that you could put it somewhere else in the backyard, but you don't want to, it doesn't work for you, so therefore you want to take out a tree, then the development permit guidelines will kick in. You have to go through the development process, the development process says, you'd say, mature trees should be retained where possible, and if they're not to be retained, there should be sufficient planting to trade off.
So, my property over there would be really nice, but with that tree out to allow some more sunlight in, that's where I like it to be, is why remove that tree? Do I have to go through a development permit?
Then you go through development. If that's, if you can, if you can build somewhere else on your backyard and still put it in, with the coach house in, yes, then you go through development. If that's the only place, the only way that you can build your coach houses is to take that tree out, then you don't.
All right. Further on that? Okay, so recommendation one, then, as moved to second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Those opposed? I'm opposed to the tree retention nomination or whatever, probably worded that, so that motion is defeated. Is there a mover of the motion without that amendment?
Move it, move.
Thank you. Second amendment. Discussion, any further on that? Seeing none, all is in favor. Item two is in accordance with Section 879 of the Government Act, the notice of opposed OCP amendment placed, wasn't born, and copied, be replaced on website.
Move recommendation two.
Thank you.
Second.
Moving second on all of that, all is in favor. Those motions carried. Right, and three, then, Counselor Tom?
It's actually Patty's, so do you?
Well, whoever would like to move that.
I'll move it with the number three.
Okay.
What's the change?
With the wording that our planner can refresh us with?
Certainly. With allowance for two-story coach houses on a site-specific basis.
Good.
Moving second, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all is in favor, motion's carried. Number four, let staff be directed to draft a zone amendment by law for council consideration.
Move.
Second.
Thank you, discussion, in favor, motion's carried.
Move recommendation five, two.
Second.
The discussion, item, all is in favor, motion's carried.
Great. Does that have the one really wanted to ensure that the notification?
No, it's next, that's six, I think.
Oh.
Wait.
Okay.
Yes, mailout requirements and so on. All right, under item six, then, Mr. Planner, what would you suggest in regards to fourteen days resupply?
And that staff be directed to, to seek, so we don't make it by date, that it's not developed, seek a middle mailout time of fourteen days.
Okay, so with that amendment, is there a mover?
Well, I would move that, but would this not be something that we should maybe do with our mailouts at every occasion?
We're not doing that here today.
I know, but I'm saying maybe we're doing this wrong, if we should be changing that policy rather than changing it just in here?
Well, let's deal with this one here now, and we can, leave staff to consider it as they come forward with this one, and then maybe apply it elsewhere. Because we still have lots of work to do in our OCP implementations.
All right, I'll move that.
Second.
Second. As amended, all is in favor, motion's carried. And that staff be directed to update the order of housing strategy.
Move.
Second.
Favor, motion's carried. All right, thank you, staff and council, for all those discussions and considerations on coach houses. So that brings us to page thirty-five, a letter from the Regional District, regarding the scheduled, uh, this one.
Will we receive?
Received, all is in favor. Motion's carried, and further on that at this point? Yes?
I know, like you just indicated this letter's after the summer, and I would certainly think after the ECM, at least.
I will let, just to even know that, probably be a preference for most.
Including, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think anything will happen, ECM this year, third week of September, so I'll imagine it won't happen. All right, so we moved your seat on that, so that's good. We also need to receive the annual reports.
What we see? Second.
Moving the second on the seat, all is in favor, motion's carried. And this will come forward to the next council meeting for formal adoption.
Okay, I was just wondering on, can I look at our downtown revitalization and marine enhancement portion here? You know, if I was a member of the public, I would say after two years, as this was our, our main focus, is that there hasn't been a lot of action happen, if any. And so, you know, that would be the public intercept.
That's accurate, well, certainly there's been, I think it's reflected in.
I think that I have the floor, so if I could continue, please.
I will let you continue, but I will point you to the performance measures.
I was speaking of, if I was a member of the public, sitting there watching, and our, and our goal was to get downtown revitalization, marine enhancement, it would appear that nothing has happened, I think that's what I said. So my question is, as this is one of our goals, at what point can you start seeing some, you know, some tangible outcomes from this plan?
Well, CAO, I would speak to it, there is a number of items that are reflected in the objectives and measures that I've forward, and certain time lines indicated there, so it's moving forward.
Appearances may not be everything that we see. Part of that is that there is a fair amount of background work going on right now, the capacity studies for infrastructure, or, or any later, about thirty percent complete, and we hope to have those in hand completed in September of this year. We also are working on the application for, on the waterfront, and that was a formal proponent to provide me with some drawings that we can use for the application, and that will enable contractors to get other detailed information. So it is, things are happening, and they will come together to something more of substance in the next, near future. Thank you. Where are you?
Yes, Counselor Ken. Yeah, I would support Counselor Grant's concerns, and I don't think it's a question of intent of the town staff, I agree, I think we believe the town is intent on moving forward with these things, but the progress, seeing progress before the end of the term is important, that's to see something that's going on, and then moving forward, so I think it's a fair question.
Well, certainly the intention of providing a progress report for 2012, and of course, we're halfway through 2013. One of the first things we did was reduce parking requirements for restaurant uses, and we had a proponent very anxious to do that, and of course, that hasn't happened. So, you know, the best of intentions, even an active one, that always result in the activity that you see coming, that you thought's upcoming. So we keep moving forward on these things, assure you staff are on a ongoing basis looking at all these measures within the time, a lot of the major projects that they've got coming. So certainly the four key objectives are in addition to all the other work this is going on. So if people can look at the progress report and see what's done, it's intended to be as open and as transparent as possible as to where they're going to mine with the going forward objectives and measures. So we're a year and a half into our mandate, it's just over now, and hopefully now we accomplish the next year.
So, uh, we're a year and a half into our mandate, it's, uh, just over now, and, uh, hopefully know we've accomplished next year, I'm sure. Anything further? Yes?
I just had a question, uh, page forty-eight. Um, that town, town plot, trails, more for the nature and, and, uh, I think it's been done. Is, where is that available on a website or, or, or the parking, uh, is there any signage available? I mean, we talked about, is there signage or, or...
I think that you're looking at, uh, the page of, that was the original objective, but I think if you look at the, uh, progress report and also the objectives and measures for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, I think we're still working on that. Um, and performance measurements, uh, in terms of that, I can refer to staff as well. There's a reference on page fifty-three, for example, to that not having happened yet. And referred to, I don't even know if staff have, uh, recently met, at least one of the, or two of the councils on that issue.
Yes, dear worship, and we're about, uh, two weeks away from bringing something forward.
Great.
All right, so, uh, again, the annual report is a reflection of the work that's been done to the end of twenty twelve. Where we're still going, of course, reckoning back to the strategic plan and, uh, of course, there's other financial and other information there as well. So we'll be considering that for final adoption, or adoption, should say, uh, lies there too, I believe. And the reports, uh, as we go forward. Unless there's anything further, uh, that's the end of our agenda, worship.
So move...
Second.
All is in favor? Votions carried.
Don't forget seven o'clock tonight, we'll be down at the lobby car next door.